So I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:03 PM on November 30th, 2021 in Millville, Massachusetts. So item number two on the agenda, discuss special town meeting recess and continuation timing and related public safety matters. So I don't see any of our health officials here yet. Peter, are we expecting anyone? Or are we just supposed to look at the email?
Well, I understood that Dustin was going to attend, but in the meantime, I did send you that email from Sherri with some information, latest information from the Board of Health on COVID-19 in Millville.
Yep. So Jen, if I may, is this the first Board of Selectmen meeting since last Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so do you just kind of want to get people who might be watching this or tuning in up to speed, I guess, on how we got here, where we are, and kind of what the point of tonight's meeting is? Or do you want me to walk through that a little bit?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay, so as everybody, well, not everybody knows. So actually, by way of introduction, Jackie Lima, town moderator. So the task that I have is to moderate the town meetings. And the Board of Selectmen had posted a warrant and scheduled a special town meeting that was to be held last Monday, November 22nd, at the Millville Elementary School. Shortly, within hours prior to the meeting, we were notified of some very serious health concerns related to COVID at the school and the positivity rate within our town. So I was contacted by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, by the Town Administrator, by the Chairman of the Board of Health. We consulted with the town's attorney, and we determined that under Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10A, the moderator actually has the authority to essentially postpone a meeting if we deem that it is unsafe for a certain reason. So the moderator can declare a recess or a continuance period. So based on the COVID situation in town, we deemed within hours of the meeting that it was not going to be safe to assemble so many people within Millville Elementary, regardless of the safety precautions that we had previously put in place for the meeting. Just the positivity rate in the town seemed really high. It jumped quite drastically during that week. So Jen Gill, myself, and the town clerk met at the school at 7:00 PM. We essentially opened the meeting, just did a continuance for two weeks till Monday, December 6th, at 7:00 PM at the Millville Elementary School. And then we recessed the meeting, and that was it. It was not an official meeting, since there was not a quorum of 40 voters present. And in consultation with the town's attorney, we said that we would reassess between now and December 6th to really see what's going on. At this point, the powers within Mass General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10A, allow me to continue to recess the meeting if we deem that the meeting being held would not be safe again due to the COVID conditions. So the meeting, the intention of tonight's meeting, I believe, is for the Board of Selectmen, we are hoping for the Board of Health, and Peter, you know, and I to kind of put our brains together and determine whether it would be safe to have a meeting next Monday, or if we should, under that, you know, guidance within the law, postpone again. So unless anybody else has anything to add, I think that's where we are at this point.
I agree. That's where we are. Okay, so, um, and I'm just looking at the Millville laboratory confirmed COVID positive cases. So the positivity rate is up quite a bit, 8.68%. So if we look at that comparative to a few neighboring towns, Blackstone is 6.45, Uxbridge is 7.19, and Northbridge is 5.06 for the same time period. So we are higher than the surrounding towns. Um, so I guess I'm trying to see if we were, like, how can we have this meeting and have people feel safe and want to come? And if we don't have this meeting, and we decide to cancel it, which I don't know what the process is for that, Peter, we'd have to enlist the town council on what that is. Like, do we want to consider that at all, if we can do that? Right? Some of the things that I was thinking of today, like, in terms of safety, and I talked about this with Peter, would be instead of having it in the auditorium, to maybe have it in the gym, because it's a lot more space. Like, people could easily be six feet apart based on our normal attendance for a special town meeting. People could maybe even be, like, 10 feet apart if they wanted, based on our typical attendance. So that would be one way. And then we could ask people to maybe just dress a little warmer, and we could keep doors open, so there's lots of airflow. So it was one thing, if we were to move forward. That was one way I thought we could move forward. I would feel comfortable, but Andrew and Todd and Jackie and Peter, I'll make sure that we all feel comfortable. I guess if one of us is not going to feel comfortable being there, we need to either figure out a way to have the meeting where we all feel comfortable, or we think about not having the meeting.
Yeah, Jen, I think when I had put together a task force, it would have been for the May Annual Town Meeting 2020. We did present this as an option. I think there were logistical challenges in terms of the audio visual. I'm not sure that the meetings could be recorded in there, as well as, you know, getting microphones and the sound. I don't know if Tim could speak to if that's possible or not. At the time, we ended up choosing to go outside. We thought it would be easier to set up stuff outside, as opposed to using the gym. But and I think that might have been a large reason for it.
There it goes. So in a gymnasium, it does get very echoing reverb, but if we just have, like, not as many microphones on, we could let it happen, because we can set up, like, speakers in there, and the audio can be fine. And Jesse and I can set up anywhere to film anything. So it would really just be, we can't have too many microphones on at the same time.
So it seems like not ideal, but workable, is what I'm hearing. Okay. Andrew and Todd, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm more or less on the fence. I'm not sure what the best course faction would be at this point. So I'm kind of open to suggestions.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way. I'm not sure what we should do at this point, because the numbers are continuing to climb.
I know.
So speaking to that, I had, Jen, I think these were the numbers that you were just quoting. I had asked kind of, you know, Board of Health. So one of the things, too, when we postponed this, I had to send a report to the Attorney General's Office explaining why I did this. And Board of Health had to justify as well why they, why we didn't hold a meeting that we said we were going to hold, right, as a legislative body within our town. So, you know, in terms of justification for why we felt it was, you know, the right thing to do last week, you can kind of see here is the positivity numbers, right, within the town. I had asked for a Board of Health representative to be on the meeting tonight. It doesn't look like anybody made it. And again, this data was what we based the decision last week on. It doesn't look like there's any additional data that's been added. I think there is a lag between what's reported to the town. And I think, Jen, these were the numbers, you know, that you were also citing when we compared to other towns around us. You know, not having a crystal ball, I don't know if things will be better next Monday, if things would be better in a month from next Monday, if things will be worse. I don't know.
Because the get-togethers is what kind of causes things. So I think, like, we're going to see things. So Thanksgiving was a couple days ago. So I think we're going to see things worse through the next two weeks, which would be through December 9th. So then the 13th and 20th, like, the two weeks before Christmas, might be, might be better, but people might be together with friends versus family. And then, of course, then there's Christmas, and then after that. So like, in January is kind of boring. So people, I think, do stay home more, and it's cold. Like, do you, like, we're kind of more in the house in January. But I'm also kind of boring. So, I don't know, I guess, I guess, I don't.
But just to clarify, you saw, Jackie, the email from Brian Riley. You have the option to continue again. You don't even have to, you can do that in the next few days if you so choose. And the continuation can be the 30-day one.
Right.
And you even have that option, I think, again, if you really had to, versus going forward on Monday night. So that, you know, I think that's probably where you're at. It doesn't, you know, council was not too supportive of an altogether cancellation at this stage. He said he would have to consult with the Attorney General's Office to see whether they would allow that under the circumstances. So I just, just reiterate what, you know, I sent you from him, what you saw from him.
I mean, the other thing is, you know, so is, so I completely agree that it is not kind of favorable to just cancel the meeting altogether. A creative solution could be, if there was an outdoor meeting, so right now, the meeting is posted for December 6th at Millville Elementary. If there was a quorum of 40 voters in the parking lot of Millville Elementary, who met at 7:00 PM, who made a motion to dissolve the warrant, that warrant would be, and it passed, that warrant would be dissolved. When it's warmer, the Board of Selectmen could take up a new warrant in the springtime to address the issues that are on this warrant. It's a risky move to have an outdoor meeting on December 6th and try and get 40 voters to stand in a parking lot. But if there was a motion to just dissolve the warrant and not act on it, that would be a way around it.
Very creative, Jackie, and I very much appreciate that. I did, Peter and I actually did look at the weather. December 12th, which is a Sunday, allegedly is going to be 50 degrees and sunny. I am, Andrew, stop laughing at me.
Weird things have happened.
I'm just like, I don't know what else to do. So December 12th is sunny and 50. It's a Sunday. There is no Patriots game that Sunday, so it's not like, you know, I think people might attend. We could do it earlier, like, say, 11:30, and then be done at 1:30, and that would be warmer. But that's, that was another creative solution.
People have balked sometimes at Sunday meetings due to church, I've heard. I've definitely gotten feedback about that.
Okay, it was just warmer.
Absolutely. Yep, no, I'm not shutting it down. I'm just.
No, no, fair.
Especially around Christmas, you know, people with Advent might be going to church more so than they, more so than they usually do this time of the year.
That's true.
Being on their best behavior for Santa.
Oh, so actually, from when Peter and I checked the weather at noon, until now, so now it looks like Sunday's going to be rainy, but Saturday is now 45 and mostly cloudy.
Yeah. I don't know that, you know, logistically, we'd want to have a whole meeting outdoors. I don't know. I was just kind of throwing it out there. If the Board of Selectmen thought that, you know, anything on there could be taken up later in the spring.
There are a few things we could move, I think, to the spring. So certainly, I think we can move the bylaws to the spring. I would prefer, and that's just based on feedback that I've seen, that kind of social media. Peter, I know we prefer to do it sooner so we could impact the spring budget, but I saw that people thought bylaw changes should be later. Let me look at the, we could maybe do the, let me, sorry, I need to pull it up. I don't have it memorized. I know, Warren. That's not it. That's the red line one.
Yeah, I think that there's the bills of prior year, you know, that's, you know, reality is those get paid when the town approves them getting paid. So if there's no meeting to approve it, they'll have to wait.
Yeah.
The budget adjustments, you know, we, Jen, you and I talked briefly about that today.
Yeah.
You know, we'd have to get creative to get to a later date, but it's not impossible, I guess, is the point. And so the other one that stands out is having the great, you know, the two greatest time sensitive, or three greatest time sensitive ones, bills of prior year, the budget adjustments, and I think the stabilization fund replenishment is another, you know, most time sensitive. The others had some time sensitivity, but again, it's not the end of the world if.
We don't have free cash to do the stabilization.
No, it's replenishing, using general stabilization to replenish the reserve fund that had been utilized. You know, most of it was utilized for that fire truck repair.
Yep. Can you make it so I can share my screen, please? Tim, I pulled the warrant from the, so we can maybe get by with.
You should be able to.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't even try, to be honest, because I know that you, okay. So let's see. So we'd have to do one for the meeting, then three for budget adjustments, four for the reserve fund, five, six, seven, we're not going to do, because we don't have free cash.
Yeah, so if you, if you did the rest of those, either as a special town meeting or at the annual town meeting, or you did a special in the spring when you know you can do it outdoors, or the world, COVID world is more reliably better, I guess.
I don't know. I guess, I think it'd be silly to have a meeting in, like, April and in May. Like, if we make it past February with no meeting.
Yeah.
And we'll just do everything in May.
Right.
I don't know if anyone disagrees.
Yeah, so it's really, you know, I don't, I wouldn't want to be in Jackie's shoes, because she's the ultimate determinator, but it really seems to me the three selectmen are a key voice in this decision-making process here.
Yeah, I guess. So then on the other articles, the other one that I would be concerned with is, so I haven't followed up with Senator Fatman, but for Article 9, we're probably going to get 75 in the budget, which is great, but we still need 25 to fund it. And that money needs to be spent this year. So if we approved it in the spring, I don't think that would leave enough time unless, so would it be okay to spend the 75? And then, if he needed 10 to finish it, like, how, or say 15 to finish it, 15,000, would there be a way to?
I guess, finding out with Senator Fatman, if there are going to be any requirements that the town put up, you know, a quarter of the cost of this thing. I don't think that's been mentioned yet from him.
So he's only able to get a 75,000. So anything over that, we need to pay.
Right.
We could have them work until 75,000.
Yeah.
And then, and spend all that money, and then leave it, leave 15,000 left of work to be finished after the meeting.
You could bid the project out in two phases. Phase one is $75,000, which gets awarded and paid by the state money. And then phase two could be bid and awarded based on the town allocating it in the town meeting in May.
Okay. And then, so the senior center man, we might need to help them, them more there, Peter.
Right.
The niche up, I'd prefer to have it now, but again, I feel like we could probably, I think we could, we're not going to know what's going on with other buildings in town, so we could, it just means we're not going to have a plan on what we're to do with the town hall at the springtime meeting, is what that means, which makes me very, very sad. But that's just what that means. So we can do one, three, and four. In the parking lot on Monday at 7 o'clock.
So we, it would be very dark. We'll need to get some lighting out there, I think.
Yeah. There's lights in the parking lot. Will we need more lights?
Um, I would think for our safety, you know, where are you going to have people park versus where are they going to stand? How would the tellers check people in, right? You know, to do actual votes and count yeas and nays. You know, that's why I was thinking, if it was just to dissolve the warrant, I would think that that would probably pass unanimously, and it would be under five minutes, right? The longest part would be to check people in.
Yep.
If we're actually taking up articles to vote on at 7 o'clock at night in the dark, that's a different story.
Okay.
Jen, is there any way we could do a poll again and see if people want to go in person in the building before we actually decide?
You know that I'm not good with polls on Facebook, Todd, but you are. So if you want to put a poll up, that would be amazing.
I mean, if we can get 40 people that say they're going to show up, I mean, this is all null and void, right?
Inside for a meeting you're talking, Todd?
Yeah, like, December 6th. If you get 40 people that say they'll go, then let's just do it and get it over with.
But the thing is, too, you know, it's my job to make sure that everybody in the town has the opportunity to vote and to speak, and that they're in a safe meeting, and that they feel comfortable being there. So I'd hate to say that we're going to have a meeting just that 40 healthy, you know, COVID-not-scared-of people are willing to come and make decisions on behalf of the town. I feel like that almost purposely excludes, you know, at-risk people, elderly people, people who are not comfortable in coming out in that situation. I mean, there is a real threat that that people would be exposed to. So we have to make sure, we don't want to have a meeting just to hit a 40 quorum. We want to have a meeting that everybody can participate in, I think, is the, is the spirit of the law.
The other thing, just looking at the weather, Monday night, Monday has some chance of rain there, 40%.
I guess right now, my recommendation, then, Jackie, is to postpone. And did anyone? No, it's just Tim. For a couple things. One, we don't have anyone here from the Board of Health to make, give us the information, the recommendation, or the other. That's unfortunate.
Is there anybody, Tim, on the chat line who's, who's trying to put in a public comment? I know I got a message from the school yesterday, asking me if a new date was set, so I'm not sure if anybody, or anybody from the public at all is looking to chime in.
Not yet.
Okay.
So yeah, it sounds like you're thinking the 30-day can recess again until January, and January 5th, right? That would be the right next date, 30 days? Is that what I'm hearing you're saying? Because I, you know, there are logistical challenges of whatever is done for Monday night, for example.
Yeah.
Unless Jackie does the continuation slash recess.
Want to try to shoot for, like, Saturday at noon, the 11th?
To have a full outdoor meeting, Jen?
With three, those three articles. We can withdraw the rest.
I personally am not available Saturday, the 11th afternoon.
Okay.
I have a commitment at 1:00 PM, so I would need to be done by noon.
Okay.
I think that's risky, too. I mean, the day before, three days before it snow, the day after it's rain.
Something in the 11th. So the 9th, then the 10th say snow.
Right.
Says rain. But there's one mostly cloudy window in there, and that's what I'm aiming for.
The skies open up just for Millville to have.
That's right. Okay, so I think we have to do, so if we do a 30-day continuation, and that puts us at, one, two, three, four, the 5th of January.
You know, and I don't want to continue just to continue. I want to have a reason to continue. And I think, based on the trends that we see of COVID, it doesn't go away in three or four days. And Jen, to your point with Thanksgiving and indoor gatherings, if anything, that the past 18 months have taught us, after those things, you generally get an increase on cases. So this is very speculative. But, and I'm not a trained professional, you know, to map this out and, you know, know the statistical analysis of which way it's going to go. But, I mean, I think the prudent person would think that the cases would remain if not increase. The state is increasing currently. You know, that was included in the Board of Health, you know, that we received today from Sherri. You know, the numbers in our specific town have been increasing. So, and to Peter's point, I think it's not fair to everybody who's involved in pulling this together, from cable to police to the tellers, to, you know, Diane, the town clerk, to Peter, to Board of Selectmen, to residents, to make a judgment call again a few hours before. You know, I think we did the right thing last Monday, but I don't want to do that again and wait until the last minute. So I very much have a feeling right now that I'm leaning towards calling a 30-day recess again after the 6th, just to make sure, again, my main concern is that everybody who wants to participate feels safe enough to come out and participate. And right now, I, I don't think anybody's going to feel increasingly safer next Monday than they did last Monday.
No, I agree. And I guess, so if we play this out, so I think, so things, so you continue on the 6th to the 5th, that's going to be less, that's going to be roughly 10 days after, 11 days after Christmas. So I think the number's going to be bad then again. So then we continue another 30 days?
Well, I think we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there. I think, again, I'm barely even comfortable making a decision for Monday, for six days away. I don't know that I can make a decision for 36 days away. You know, I would propose that I'm going to reach out to the Board of Health again and ask them that week what the, what the numbers in Millville are looking. I'm going to look on the Nasty PH site and, and see what the Massachusetts trend is. So at this point, I'm really not comfortable speculating on what we'll do on January 5th. I think we need to wait until, like, the 1st to sort that out.
Okay. So, just going back to your other option, do we just want to try to dissolve the war? I guess the two options is dissolve the war on the 6th or 30-day continuance.
Right. And the reason I would feel comfortable having 40 people, the minimum quorum, just so that there's no confusion in what I'm saying, I would feel comfortable having 40 registered voters come out and dissolve a warrant, because that means we're not taking action. We're not voting on anything. I would feel comfortable doing that, rather than having a meeting where people weren't comfortable in coming. So, you know, it's up to, I guess I would take advice from the Board of Selectmen in terms of if, if you think that there's nothing on the warrant that couldn't wait until we have a safer spring meeting, then we could go with the option of meeting at 7:00 PM on Monday night with hopefully 40 people to dissolve. Or if we don't want to do that, and we want to continue, because there are things on here that need to be voted on and approved, then I would be comfortable doing the 30-day continuance out until January 5th. And assessing it when it gets closer to that date. And assessing it when it gets closer to that date.
Yeah.
Jackie.
Hey, Dustin.
Uh, Sherry just, I forgot all about it. I'm sorry.
Glad to see you.
What are we talking about?
We're talking about vacations we're going to all take.
Yeah, okay. Well.
Yeah, so we were looking for some updated numbers. Sh- Sherry had shared some stuff with us, um, through the twentieth through November twentieth. Which was kind of the justification that we made for canceling last week's meeting. Um, and I know, you know, she gets the information from the, the nurses who aren't, you know, as quick to pass along and, and relay the information as we'd like. Um, you know, but we were just kind of saying, we don't know that next Monday it's going to be any safer in Millville. And that people are going to be comfortable coming out to a meeting, um, than they were last week, so.
I, you know, I, I don't believe it's going to be any better, if not worse, we're the highest of the surrounding towns at like. Over eight percent. Um, I only have what we have up till the end of, you know, eleven twenty or so. So I only have that same info.
Yeah.
But it's steadily rising. I mean, I don't know how long you can put it off. And if you can't, I mean, we'd have to have some major mandates about masks and dis- distancing and.
Yeah.
But I would suggest putting it off.
Okay, we were kind of boiling it down at this point, I think, to two options. Option one would be next Monday night, if we had an outdoor meeting at seven P M at the elementary school and just had forty people. That's the most, that's the minimum that we would need and just made a motion to dissolve the warrant, meaning not take any action on anything. Then we could kind of put this to bed. This warrant would be settled, it would be dissolved, it would be completed. And then in the spring, the selectman could do a new warrant, right? With new articles, it could be the same ones or it could be other ones on. You know, whatever's relevant and, and try to host an outdoor meeting or hope that the numbers are better in the spring. So that would be option one. The other option is if the Board of Selectmen does feel that there are things on here that cannot wait until the spring that need to be voted on. Then I'm leaning towards doing a thirty day continuance, which is within my power of, with the state. Um, which would put us at January fifth. The week of January fifth, I guess we would reassess and see kind of where the numbers are, what things look like and decide if we'd want to do another thirty day continuance. At that point, um, those are kind of the two options.
That would be the option I would go with.
Okay.
Thirty day. My, my recommendations, it's, it, it's getting worse. People, there's so many breakthrough cases. I was a breakthrough case a couple of weeks. Well, I'm on my fourth week, so I'm better. I had both vaccine, two vaccines. Of Pfizer and I caught it from somebody who was also vaccinated.
Right.
They passed it on to me.
Yeah.
So it, it turned out to be like I, it was like the flu. I'm glad I was vaccinated.
Right.
I'm sure I would have been worse.
Yeah.
Um. I would suggest putting it off.
Okay.
Option B.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want it to, you know, I think we're asking for trouble if we get a group of people together.
Right. Well, so option A would be get forty people, you know, the minimum needed outside wearing masks. Just to open a meeting, dissolve the warrant and close the meeting. So it would be probably five minutes. It would probably take longer to check people in. We would stand outside, um, you know, one vote and be done. Um, and then not have to keep submitting documentation to the Attorney General about why we keep continuing and, and what we're doing. And, you know, um, kind of not dragging it out, but you know, kind of not having a resolve, right? That would be the resolve. That would be the end. And then we could take things up in the spring. Um, but I'm totally fine if the, if the Board of Selectmen feels that there are important. Business items on here that need to be addressed, then I am fine, you know, with the recommendation of the board, with, with the Board of Health. Um, you know, doing a thirty day continuance.
Well, speaking, I mean, I, I speaking as just a member of the Board of Health and. I would suggest putting it off. If it can't be, then we'll just have to take heavy precautions. Yeah, I don't let anybody in without a mask. It, it's.
Yeah. And those are going to be, those are happening anyway, you know, we had, and we had section up every other row. We ask people not to sit next to each other if they're not in the same immediate household. You have to wear your mask the whole time. We have hand sanitizer, one person at the microphone at a time. So I mean, I think we were definitely taking all of those precautions seriously anyway. I think, you know, the thing that came into play last week was when that positivity rate and the number of cases in town spiked. It was very alarming, um, you know, and, and again, I don't see that going down next Monday, so.
No, I don't either and I, I see it going up. At least that's the trend, so. That being said, I mean, I would, I would postpone it, but that's, I don't know the logistics of it and what you need to do to. Postpone it, you know, so. But that would be my, uh, that would be my two cents.
Okay.
So, um, and I would probably think with the other two, that's just me, but we, there are two other members, but I would suggest, I would think they would. Feel the same. I mean, nobody wants to, uh, get people in an incubator of sick, so.
For sure.
Okay. Andrew, do you have any?
Jen, any?
Uh, we have, I think we need you for the second agenda, I just want to make sure that Andrew and Todd, because now with Dustin's recommendation, I think we. We should lean to his advice and postpone. Jackie, do you, how do you feel about that?
I'm okay with that. Yeah. If, if the majority of the Board of Selectmen agrees, I, you know, that you, you guys want to have the meeting. Um, that there are, you know, important things to vote on, then I'm fine with doing a thirty day continuation.
Okay.
I mean, uh, the way I see it, because if we do the thirty day extension, that would put it at, I think it was, what's January fifth? Which would be what, five days after New Year's? So that would be also another, so I feel like I'm kind of towards the cancellation. Just because it, it, by the time. Once we get through the whole holiday thing, then we're just getting closer into the spring town meeting and at the same time, I don't know, it doesn't. I, I don't think, uh, January fifth will be, will be in a better situation than we are at this point.
Would have the opportunity for one more continuation after that, Andrew, which would be up to thirty days as well. So that would be, you know. We can make it four weeks after that, which would, things should calm down. So that, and that's our last continuation, correct? We get to thirty day continuations?
I don't believe it outlines it in the law, but I think that, um, you know, if you keep doing it, the Attorney General is going to. Look to you for some further explaining, um, you know, it's, it's definitely not something that I think they encourage.
No, for sure.
Right, we, we've said to people that we need to have a meeting, we have business with the town, we, we need your participation, we need you here to vote on these things. Um, so the expectation is that we have the meeting and allow them to vote on things.
Yeah.
Can we postpone for thirty days and then reevaluate whether or not to dissolve at that point, depending on what the numbers are in January?
Yeah, yeah, I would envision having this exact same meeting. It, it, you know, the, the first week in January or, you know, last week in December, absolutely.
That, that's the way I would lean. Push it thirty days and then we'll reevaluate.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be looking at us having the same meeting, you know, January third or second.
Right, to really see what are the numbers at that point? How are we doing? Is it safe? Yeah, do people feel safe? Because it's not just whether we deem it safe or not, it's whether people feel safe to come out and participate. We have to make sure that they feel safe to participate, so.
I'm just hoping with Christmas break that the kids, maybe those numbers go down with the kids being out of school for a week.
Maybe.
We get updated, we, I mean, we only get updates every two weeks, so another one's coming, but the trend has been going up. And we've actually been a tad higher than all our surrounding towns. So.
All right, so based on what I'm hearing from this meeting, I will work with Peter and go ahead, Todd. Oh, sorry, I had feedback. I thought somebody was trying to talk. Um, based on, you know, this meeting, I will go ahead and work with Peter and the town's attorney. Um, and we will not plan on having a meeting December sixth. Um, I will plan on doing the documentation, I think it's called a declaration. Um, with the Attorney General to postpone for an additional thirty days, which would put us out to Wednesday, January fifth, twenty twenty-two. At seven P M at the Millville Elementary School. Um, and again, the expectation will be the week before. You know, hopefully this group will convene again and we can determine if it's safe to do so at that time.
I think that's our best choice.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? No, I still need you, Dustin.
Okay.
We're going to move, we're going to move on from Agenda Item number two to Agenda Item number three. Any concerns? Okay, so Agenda Item number three is determination of a public safety or public health official and related reporting to Attorney General. So Dustin, that's typically Peter and the, and the, uh, town council indicated that would be. Either the health agent or the Chair of the Board of Health, which is you.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm, yes, I, the board is in favor of that. We need, we already have something all set to go with the V N A.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this is Dustin. So this is a letter that has to go to the Attorney General's office. And you sign it. So Sherry's got it all ready to go for your signature, subject to the board, basically designating you this evening as the. Signatory as the public health official on behalf of the town. It's a form letter, council put it together. It just requires your signature. It's under your name as the Board of Health Chair.
Okay.
And Sherry's got that already. I'm sure she's already sent that to you. And attached to it is the declaration or the recess that, uh, form that Jackie did that was posted throughout town. And will likely have to go through the same process again once she resets the meeting until, um, January fifth.
All right, I will probably, I will try to get those signed, uh, tomorrow.
Great.
So Peter, should we make a motion to designate Dustin, uh, who Dustin, your last name is this? So I will make a motion to designate Dustin Ciccarelli as public safety. Or public health official, official related reporting to relate reporting to the Attorney General. Looking for a second.
A second.
Thank you, Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Dustin.
Oh, thank you.
Sherry will have that for you, Dustin, tomorrow morning. You'll be.
All right, I'll talk to her.
Okay.
So, thank God Sherry texted me.
Texted her. Great to see you, Dustin. Take care.
Have a good night, bye.
Okay, and item number four, discuss other special town meeting planning items. So.
I, I don't know if there's anything further to discuss except your twelve-six meeting as the Board of Selectmen will be on.
Yes.
As scheduled and you'll be a draft agenda. We'll work that out tomorrow.
Yeah.
Backets and stuff like that, so.
Okay, and we talked about that meeting being in person. I think we should abandon ship on all personal meetings for Board of Selectmen unless. Andrew or Todd, do you feel differently? I think we should go one hundred percent back to Zoom.
No, I'm all for Zoom.
Andrew, you okay with that too?
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh, Tim, is there any public comments?
No, but if you want to give it thirty seconds.
You can give it thirty seconds. I just want to say that I hate COVID and I hate how it messes everything up. Everything, it's so inconvenient, like, is there any questions?
No, I was agreeing with you.
Just, and I, I guess the one thing that I find frustrating, I'm sure there are people in town who are just frustrated and like, who wanted to come and talk about things. And I want to hear from them. I say this all the time, I want feedback. And Andrew and Todd, I know you want to hear from people, like, what do they think? What, you know, how are we doing things like that? And we just can't do this. And I don't know of a way to do this without it being in person. So. Because I think a Zoom town meeting might be too disorganized and then that would also look bad.
Yeah, I thought about that too, like, set something up at the senior center and let everybody go in there and, but it's too much to organize.
Yeah. Like we would need to have a spot, like you can be at home or.
Right.
Or you could go in person if you felt comfortable.
Yeah, the tricky part with that, Jen, is that, you know, you have to allow everybody who's there. First of all, you have to know that they're a registered voter and how would you check them in? Then you have to allow for audience participation, which can get tricky, right? And also you have to tally their vote. So how do you, you know, monitor who's voting, who's there, who's not there? Um, lots of complications and, and they're really, you know, part of the moderators association that I'm part of, nobody has been able to do. Um, a remote meeting unless it's, there are some towns that have representatives. Um, you know, large cities, not everybody comes out to the city of Boston's town meeting, right? So they elect representatives. So certain areas with representative town meetings have been able to make it work, but where it's open participation, I don't think there's any community. Um, you know, that can, that can manage something like that, so.
Okay. Well, I guess I just appreciate the patience of everyone who lives in Millville throughout this very trying time. For us all. And I'm sorry that this keeps happening. And I wish I could control it better, but I just can't and I'm sorry. Tim, anything?
Nope.
Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Todd. Um, all those in favor? Aye.
Right.
All right, thank you, everyone.